Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. Meeting announcement, council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be cable cast on the City Channel and live streamed on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube Channel. Madam Clerk, please call the board.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Ms. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. LaValle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ross Berger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
This is Cal Smith, President.
Yeah.
We have nine members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain for a moment of silence. And during our moment of silence, please keep all the victims of this past week and a half of violence across our country, both mass shootings and individual shootings or any type of violence in our country, in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next order of business. Our next order of business. There's feedback here. You hear it?
A little bit.
Okay, sorry, I don't know what that is. Our next order of business is proclamations. We have one to be read into the record by myself, Madam Clerk.
Council President Cal Smith presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby congratulate Mr. Joe Masarelli the third on his retirement and thank him for his dedication in helping to make Chatham Village a treasure in the city of Pittsburgh and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby declared Thursday, March 18th, 2021 to be Joe Masarelli the third day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Can we have a motion in a second?
So much.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proclamation is proven. I just want to congratulate Joe and thank him for all that he's done for Chatham Village and the city of Pittsburgh. He has really made Chatham Village, he was in large part of their success with the garden work that he did and some of the things that he had done to help Chatham reach the historic designation that's reached. And just, I mean, just if you ever go up there, it's a beautiful place to visit and they just really take great pride in the community. And a lot of that is because Joe has done such an excellent job and not only maintaining the inside and the facility, but the outside grounds, which are absolutely beautiful. That's why I thank him and wish him and his family well. And next we have a will of council to be from Councilman O'Connor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Clerk, you can just read the last paragraph.
Okay. Councilman O'Connor presents, be it further resolved that this council recognizes the essential work performed by those in the restaurant service and hospitality industries through the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as those organizations that continue to advocate for their well-being and security.
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion, Councilman?
Just real brief, you know, obviously we're seeing numbers start to rise as to the amount of people allowed in restaurants and bars and things like that. And those workers are starting to get concerned that not enough of them have the shots to get back to work. So it's just trying to make them a priority and start opening up. So thank everybody for your support.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. And that moves on to our next order of business, and that is public comment. And I just would like to remind our commentators that everyone of the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberations which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats are not permitted, will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please?
The first speaker is Ikana Hau Makina, followed by Anne Wright.
Thank you.
Greetings with peace, light, and love, my title Ikana Hau Makina and the Grand and Brother Air Quark Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And today I would like to speak about accountability. At first, I'd like to honor and give a moment of silence for baby legend and he's too. Baby Legend was shot in the head by a police officer. Baby Legend is only one years old. Yes, it wasn't the intention of the officer to shoot baby Legend. But nevertheless, he was an innocent bystander. And he was shot by a police officer. And I wanted to honor his name, as I too was shot by an officer as an innocent bystander. I employ City Councils to invoke legislation for innocent victims who are merely caught in the crossfire. Who may suffer long-term consequences of having been caught in the crosshairs of people seeking justice perhaps? Or seeking to wrangle in a criminal, but yet we were innocent. And I want to remind you that innocent people are harmed when officers are out on the street. And that does not mean that they don't need to be made whole. My story is very personal to me. And there is already precedent out there for remedy and redress and restitution for us. Because we didn't ask for, baby Legend, like myself, did not ask for a bullet to pierce his small body. And I can only imagine that some of you have grandchildren, perhaps a child. Perhaps you've already raised your child, but could you for one moment imagine? Being the mother of baby Legend? Facing a system that likely won't give justice? I am here standing in the gaps demanding accountability. We need to be brought to the table for accountability. A member of mine, two members to be exact, experienced boots and adore over a cat that did not belong to them. Another member, her automobile was taken without her consent. The Declaration of Independence is very clear. Whenever a government exceeds its authority, ultra virus, it is the right and the duty of the people to alter or abolish, to institute their own government as the air.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Anne Wright.
Hello. I want to thank the council once again for passing the eviction moratorium ordinance three weeks ago on March 2nd.
Please say.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anne Wright, I live in South Oakland.
Thank you.
Um, I want to thank the council on their continuing efforts to bring sufficient funding and support to the Commission on Human Relations to fulfill their role in vetting which potential eviction actions do and do not meet the criteria for good cause stated in the ordinance. I would like to encourage the council to keep moving forward on communication with the courts, constables, and other stakeholders about the ordinance and encourage you to strive to quickly implement concrete steps for enforcement. I want to uplift the work of Director Hammond and his colleagues at the Pittsburgh Commission for Human Relations for preparing a process proposal to be voted on this coming Friday. You're working hard on this and doing excellent work. I've been monitoring eviction filings and case statuses since spring. From what I've seen over the last three weeks, the behavior of landlords has not yet been impacted by the ordinance. There have been 75 filings in magisterial districts serving Pittsburgh on or since 3/2, when the ordinance was passed, 58 of them since 3/5, when it was signed. During 2021, there have been an average of 25 filings per week. There were 19 last week and 31 the week before. This does not yet reflect a decrease. Most of the complaint forms I have reviewed on these filings continue to be for reasons which do not, at least on the surface, meet the good cause requirement for the ordinance. Many continue to be strictly for non-payment of rent or strictly for end of lease term. This does not yet show the decrease we expect to come when the seriousness of this ordinance is fully communicated. There are currently 52 more hearings scheduled in magisterial districts covering Pittsburgh this week, 57 next week, and 102 the week after. A total of 370 currently scheduled with 354 of them before the end of April. The, if communication about the seriousness of the ordinance is communicated soon, that will help. Otherwise, you know, these are going to continue to happen in the absence of that. There have been 121 cases judged for the plaintiff in Pittsburgh in the span of time between 10 days ago and 180 days ago, for which the landlord could request nor possession at any time. This number continues to grow. There have been 13 orders for possession issued in Pittsburgh on or since 3/2, 11 of them since 3/5, two of them by Northview Heights Estates, which is part of the Housing Authority of Pittsburgh. A subset of these likely would have qualified for good cause as defined in the ordinance, but others likely would not. It is tragic to see people potentially being put on the curb who should have been protected by the ordinance that has already been passed and signed. We've been doing all we can to try to get information about the ordinance and other assistance out to them, such as support in filing for appeal where appropriate, but more action by the city to educate the stakeholders, landlords, tenants, courts, and constables would help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Larissa Mednis, followed by Taylor Stessny.
Hi, my name is Larissa Mednis. I am the advocacy organizer with Pittsburgh Restaurant Workers Aid, and I am.
Please state your neighborhood, too, please.
Oh, and I live in Bloomfield. I am making a comment to thank Councilman O'Connor for introducing the will of council on vaccination for restaurant hospitality and bar workers in Allegheny County and would like to thank the council for passing the will of council and hopefully in the future we will see a prioritization of restaurant workers for vaccination and protection from COVID-19. We have faced a lot of hardships in the past year economically, health, and safety-wise. So it is a little bit hopeful to see this will of council and hopefully get the ear of the State Department of Health and the state government to make a decision on prioritizing restaurant workers for the vaccine and hopefully giving people a chance to return to work much more safely and with more peace of mind than they would have had to do otherwise. So thank you for recognizing our work as well in the will of council, as well as the work of the Restaurant Opportunities Center and the United States Bartenders Guild of Pittsburgh. We appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good day. Next speaker, please.
Taylor Stessny.
Hello, my name's Taylor Stessny. I actually live in Wilkinsburg, but up until March of last year, I was a bartender and server who worked down at the strip district. I'm also with Pittsburgh Restaurant Workers Aid with Larissa as well. I'd like to thank Councilman O'Connor for drafting the will of council and for council for passing that. Since this time last year, Pittsburgh Restaurant Workers Aid has been working to support and advocate for restaurant workers who've been greatly affected by the COVID-19 crisis. Back on March 15th, Governor Wolf announced that restaurants in Pennsylvania are going to be increasing capacity back to 75% and loosening restrictions on alcohol service in bars and restaurants. This was announced a year to the day when others like myself became greatly impacted by the COVID-19 crisis and how it affected our employment, our income, and kind of the past year just living off of a seesaw of regulations at the helm of the state that often never really provided support in response to that. We've seen our community come together and support one another during this time, and we've largely had to do that on our own with other groups and with mutual aid in mind. For example, back in December, dining service was shut down with no plan of how to make sure restaurant workers during this time had a reliable source of income beyond kind of like the unemployment systems kind of wonky going about. Anyway, now that we see other cities like Philadelphia, DC, and New York, prioritizing restaurant workers as they begin to look towards reopening, we hope that Pittsburgh and Allegheny County does that as well. So thank you all again for passing that will of council.
Thank you. Have a good day. Is any further speakers?
Yes, we have two left. The next is Fred Lapka, followed by Christine Lovey.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for your time and for allowing me to speak. My name is Fred Lapka. I am a longtime resident of Polish Hill. And I've worked in the restaurant industry off and on for the better part of the past 20 years. Most recently and up until March 15th of 2020, I had been waiting tables at Ace Hotel in East Liberty, which like many venues in the Pittsburgh hospitality industry has had to shut its doors for good due to the financial crisis of the pandemic. I also serve on the advisory board of the Pittsburgh Restaurant Workers Aid, which is a group created the day after the shutdown of bars, restaurants, and other businesses was announced last March. Pittsburgh Restaurant Workers Aid began as a food pantry that ran off of the front porch of our group's founders in Bloomfield. Our founders, Casey and Taylor, had the foresight to recognize that many of the workers in our industry would not be able to provide for themselves and their families if they had to miss a week or two of work. And the reality is that many of us in the industry weren't doing well before the pandemic hit and doors closed. Many of us were living paycheck to paycheck. And if you worked for tips, that might have meant that you were living day to day. So to miss a day or two or let alone weeks of work would have been and has been devastating. Most workers in our industry don't have the benefits and protections that workers in other industries are afforded, like health insurance and sick days. You know, so here we are, a year later, workers are being asked to return to bars and restaurants as restrictions are being eased. We're being asked to return to bars and restaurants where we can expect to be making less money than we were before the pandemic and being asked to return to work without the protection given by a vaccine. But as you know, COVID-19 is still here and new cases, new case numbers in the county are holding steady. Last month in my neighborhood, Polish Hill, we saw what was our first and hopefully last COVID outbreak through contact tracing. It was determined that those infected were all at the same neighborhood bar. You know, and not surprisingly, thanks to contact tracing, we know that throughout the pandemic, bars and restaurants have been among the top locations where people become exposed to the virus, mainly because masks cannot be worn while eating and drinking. At Pittsburgh Restaurant Workers AIDS, we appreciate and are grateful for the council's passing of the will of council asking for restaurant workers to be granted access to the COVID vaccine. The vaccine will not only help to protect the health and safety of those working in our industry, but will help to curb the spread of the virus to customers, ease the burden on our healthcare systems, and help bring an end to the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Thank you for your work. Next speaker, Chris, Officer Raffey. Is she on the phone? Yes, she's on.
Maybe having trouble getting in.
Officer Raffey, is that your phone? Please unmute your phone, Officer Raffey. Councilwoman Strasburg, it's star six, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, thanks. Star six, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Hi, good morning. I'm so sorry about that. As you know, I've been around on the job for 28 years. And for the past 24 years, I've specialized in cases of animal neglect. I'm speaking today to support the legislation that was risen to your attention by Councilman Bruce Kraus. I have, prior to June of 2019, my cases mostly involved dogs and cats. In June of 2019, I worked with Officer Ray Switzer on the case of the loose alligator in the Beachview community that resulted in us finding, I believe, 33 additional reptiles and animals living in inhumane and terrible conditions inside of the owner's house. After that case, I handled a case involving turtle hatchlings. Turtle hatchlings are basically considered baby turtles. They were being sold out of a store on Brownsville Road in the care community. During my first visit to the store, I discovered 97 turtle hatchlings being housed in a 10-gallon aquarium. They were on top of each other. They had no food available. And many of the turtles were very lethargic because they were so cold. They were transported to Humane Animal Rescue and were cared for, and unfortunately, several of those turtles died. I returned to that same store last fall after receiving additional reports and removed an additional eight turtle hatchlings from the store. In both of these cases, criminal charges have been filed. I believe that in both of the cases I've worked involving reptiles, that the reptiles were being exploited for profit. Since I found the reptile's end is heartbreaking. Honestly, there's no need for residents to own alligators, crocodiles, and red-eared turtle sliders. These reptiles are not companion animals and require a lot of care and commitment. I believe that most people do not think of what is involved in keeping these reptiles before bringing them into their homes. I believe that these reptiles should be left in their natural habitat. In both of the reptile cases that I've been involved in, I witnessed the reptiles not being properly housed or properly cared for and suffering. I believe that supporting the ordinance to ban residents from owning alligators, crocodiles, and red-eared turtle slider turtles is the right thing to do, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Officer Raffey. And then exhaust our list of registered speakers. And now move on to the next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
The new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you and good morning, Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1314, Resolution Granting Unto Northside Common Ministry, Inc. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an existing set of entry steps and canopies at 1601 Brighton Road in the 25th Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 1315, Resolution Granting Unto Frick Lender Associates, LP. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a projecting blade sign at 437 Grant Street, 2nd Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 1316, Resolution Granting Unto 601 Grant Street Investment, LP. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a projecting blade sign in 601 Grant Street, 2nd Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 1317, Resolution Granting Unto Nicholas Nicholas G. and Diane M. Landis. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, at their own cost and expense, to install a new awning at 26 Market Square, 1st Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 1318, Resolution Granting Unto Solara Ventures Ventures 7 LLC. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install tree pits at 2635 Penn Avenue, 2nd Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1319, Resolution Granting Unto Terminal Leasing, Inc. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new concrete wood cafe deck, two standard tree pits, and two new suspended steel canopies along 24th Street at 2400 Smallman Street in the 2nd Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1320, Resolution Authorizing Acceptance by the City of the Dedication of Zuzu Circle, originally recorded as Bailey Park Avenue in the Bailey Park Plant of Blacks situated in the 3rd Ward, 18th Council District. Bill Number 1321, Resolution Granting Unto O'Shea I. Durnbury, Inc. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a small blade sign that will project into the right-of-way at 5227 Butler Street in the 10th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1322, Resolution Granting Unto Quality Managed Services, LLC. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an existing set of entry steps at 5416 Butler Street, 10th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1323, Resolution Granting Unto Pittsburgh Trust for Cultural Resources. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an existing fire escape at 937 Liberty Avenue in the 2nd Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 1324, Resolution Granting Unto Extra Space East 1 LLC. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install seven new entry canopies at 7535 Penn Avenue in the 14th Ward, 9th Council District. Bill Number 1325, Resolution Granting Unto Southside Works City Apartments, LLC. There are successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install two new projecting banner signs and two canopies at 2603 Sidney Street in the 16th Ward, 3rd Council District. Bill Number 1326, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the Laramore Avenue Bridge Project and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed $731,500 and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $1,500. Bill Number 1327, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a reimbursement agreement to receive grant funding from the South Side Slopes Neighborhood Association for a lighting project on the 18th Street steps and further providing for an agreement in expenditures not to exceed $100,000. Bill Number 1328, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Work to enter on behalf of the city into an energy services agreement with Energy Center Pittsburgh, LLC for the supply of steam to the city-county building with the possibility of hot and/or chill water in the future.
Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, could I ask for your indulgence to waive the rules of council on Bills 1325 and 1327? That 1327 especially is time-sensitive so that they could appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda?
You sure can. Motion to waive the rules. Waiver wait on Bill Number 1327 and 1325.
Thanks, Councilman. And I'll second.
And we have a motion of second. Any discussion? Seeing then, all in favor?
Aye.
The bills will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda.
And then, Madam President, just one more thing, if I may. Madam Clerk, on 1320, that is Bill's aside to the 18th Council District. I don't, I don't think we have one of those. So we might want to look at the correcting where that ultimately lives. Thanks.
Yes, so noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1329, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 3,500 Forbes Avenue. Bill Number 1330, Ordinance Authorizing the City to Enter Into an Intergovernmental Corporation Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services with regard to Medicaid reimbursement services for a term of three years plus one possible two-year extension at the party's mutual option. The agreements shall result in net revenue for the city, but will but will, but will require upfront expenses in an amount not to exceed one million three hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred and ten dollars annually for a total amount not to exceed six million eight hundred nineteen thousand fifty dollars.
Thank you. And Councilwoman, Councilman Kraus, uh, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman. And Councilman, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Morning.
Councilman Lovell presents Bill Number thirteen thirty-one, Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of MGT of America Consulting LLC in an amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars relating to a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number thirteen thirty-two, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with First National Insurance Agency LLC for insurance brokerage services for all necessary policy types. This shall be a no-cost agreement with a term of three years with two one-year options to extend. Bill Number thirteen thirty-three, Resolution providing for a professional services agreement or existing agreement for consulting services but not limited to auditing, accounting, and technical services for the city controller's office and a cost not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Uh, motion to waive the rule, Rule eight on Bill thirteen thirty-two?
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor? Is this one for act, for the, um, emergency?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. It will appear on tomorrow's standing committee's agenda. Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President. Thank you.
Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number thirteen thirty-eight, Resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with certain individuals in conjunction with the Department of Innovation and Performance Pro Code O program that will provide additional support for the innovation and performance initiatives at no cost to the city.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. Good morning, Councilman.
President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number thirteen thirty-four, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of city planning to enter into a memorandum of understanding and/or an amended memorandum of understanding with the Natural Resource Defense Council in support of the, the American cities' climate challenge. The MOU shall be at no cost to the city. Bill Number thirteen thirty-five, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine and zoning Article One, Section nine oh two oh three zoning map by changing from RMH, multi-unit residential high-density to LNC, local neighborhood commercial. Sixteen parcels in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, Twelfth Ward, and changing for RID eight, single-unit detached residential high-density to LNC, local neighborhood commercial, thirteen parcels in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, Twelfth Ward.
Thank you. And for myself, I have, uh, one for the chair of hearings, I have a petition. Madam Clerk?
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number thirteen thirty-nine, Petition from the residents of the city requesting a public hearing before city council relative to moving the money from the military budget and invest in social program and human needs. The petition is valid in accordance with the Home Rule Charter.
Thank you. And, uh, we'll get busy, we'll schedule that hearing shortly. Uh, the next order of business is report to committee for final action. We have Councilman O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number thirteen ten, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number one forty-five, ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-six of twenty nineteen, amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title Six, conduct Article Three, dogs, cats, and other animals by repealing Chapter six thirty-nine in its entirety and adding a new Chapter six thirty-nine prohibiting the keeping, sale, exchange, adoption, exchange, or transfer of such animals in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President, if I may, just briefly, please.
Kraus.
Yeah, thank you very much. I, I, I want to thank the members for their support. Um, I want to recognize Mayor Pudido and Chief of Staff, Dan Gilman. Um, they had been working diligently, uh, with the zoo on acquiring AZA accreditation. And, uh, this week, and I'm sure many members read the, um, press releases or the media coverage, I should say, of the fact that the board of the zoo has voted on March eleventh to acquire AZA accreditation. So I'm, I'm very, uh, thankful and grateful to everyone who played a role in that, uh, in bringing that to fruition. Uh, but this morning, I would really, as much as anything else, like to recognize the work of Officer Luffy and Dan Rossi. They are truly doing God's work. If, um, if it weren't for them, uh, I think it would be a very sorry state of affair so, uh, for, um, animal health, safety, and welfare in the city of Pittsburgh. And, uh, I greatly appreciate their, um, willingness to come and educate the council as to the importance of these kinds of, uh, of bills. And their, their testimony takes it out of the realm of politic and puts it into the realm of what we do as legislators to assist people like Officer Luffy and Dan Rossi in doing the jobs that we charge them to do. And so I just appreciate them very much for coming out, speaking, and educating the council on the matter. And I greatly appreciate the council's, uh, support this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kraus. Any other members?
Madam President, may I?
Yes, Councilwoman Gross.
Yes, I just wanted to echo what Councilman Kraus said, and, um, I was at the zoo board meeting where we voted to, um, start the accreditation for AZA on March eleventh. And, um, so I think it's, um, just a, a good shift in partnerships for the zoo, certainly. Um, the, the discussions with the AZA have begun. It is a, a multi-stage accreditation process, um, with a kind of long time horizon. So, um, when I'm able, I'll update council members and the public on, on that process. And I didn't say anything last week, Councilman Kraus, when we were in standing committee because the news was embargoed, but we had already voted AZA accreditation. So I just wanted to clarify that with you as well. I was bringing it up in our standing committee discussion, and you were saying, no, it's irrelevant to this. But, but I, so I apologize for that, um, uh, in my role as a board member, um, wearing two different hats. So, but I think with, where everyone's happy about the current path that everybody's on. So appreciate it.
And, you know, and Councilwoman, I apologize. There's one more thing I should have added. Uh, the city has, uh, graciously agreed to extend the, the lease of the, the zoo for one year to provide the time unnecessary to acquire AZA accreditation. It is a, it's a rather laborious process, and it does take some time.
I had noticed that as well, and, um, there may, I'm not sure if it, the timeline in your legislation, but we can talk about that another time.
Yeah.
That's very helpful. Appreciate it.
Yeah, but it, it, it takes eighteen months to two years to acquire it, but, uh, the zoo's clearly on the path, and we are very grateful that, uh, we are at this point in, in the discussion. So, thank you very much, and thanks for your support, members.
Thank you. Any other members? Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Kraus, and everyone who worked through this and the administration for working with the zoo, who I think some of us had some concerns about, um, about how this would affect them. So thank you, everyone who worked through it. With that said, um, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, whether I or their name is called, those opposed will vote no, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Hello.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lovell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President?
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number thirteen eleven, Report of the Committee on Public Works for March seventeenth with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number twelve sixty-eight, Resolution further amending Resolution Number six forty-seven, entitled Resolution adopting and approving the twenty-twenty-one capital budget in the twenty-twenty-one CDVG program and the twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-six capital improvement program by increasing bridge upgrades by one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Bill Number twelve sixty-nine, Resolution approving the recommendation made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure at Hermitage Street be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section four seventeen oh six of the Code of Ordinances. Bill Number twelve seventy, Resolution providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the construction phase of the thirtieth street bridge construction project and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed one million six hundred thousand dollars, and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final passage. All in favor, all in favor of the, I or their name is called, those opposed will vote no, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Hello.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lovell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
I was supposed to say that. I'm sorry.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number thirteen twelve, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number twelve seventy-nine, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with Nioga for the upgrade and continual maintenance of software for HR, workforce management, applicant tracking, and civil service testing, and providing for the payment of costs not to exceed eighty-eight thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-one cents.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final passage or final action. All in favor of the passage, whether I or their name is called, those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye. So I'm moody, I'm muting myself.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lovell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. That moves us to our last committee of the day, which is Councilman Deb Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number thirteen thirteen, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number twelve seventy-two, Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for proposed land development located at thirty-two oh nine and thirty-two eleven Dobson Street. Bill Number twelve seventy-three, Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the Catherine Terrence at six eighteen, six twenty, six twenty-two, six twenty-four Elmore Street and six twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-seven Perry Street. Bill Number twelve seventy-four, Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh official sewer facilities plan for five thousand seven Lidle Street, Fifteenth Ward. Bill Number twelve seventy-five, Resolution providing for an agreement with the Fair Housing Partnership of Greater Pittsburgh to provide training on the Fair Housing Act to the staff of the city, URA, and the housing authority, and to private landlords operating in the city, and to provide quarterly presentations and technical assistance on the Fair Housing Act to staff of the city of the Pittsburgh, URA, and the housing authority, in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Will vote I or their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lovell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. And before I begin, can I have a motion? Uh, we need a motion for the, to hold the public hearing, uh, that we had, I, we had under my committee for Bill thirteen thirty-nine. Can we have a motion to, to hold a public hearing in a second?
Yeah, a motion to hold for Kewick House public hearing.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's this here, what's this public hearing for?
What is it for, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I, I.
Second. So we have a call, and the petition is valid. Uh, a petition from the residents requesting a public hearing before city council relative to moving the money from the military budget and invest in social program and human needs. The petition is valid in accordance with the Home Rule Charter. That's all the information that we have on it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Reverend, do you have any questions?
No, 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 no. I just, I'll say something later about, about it, but no, not directly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Reverend. And so then now that moves me on to the meeting announcements. Uh, immediately following this meeting, council will hold interviews for the PWSA board. Now, I will say that we are going to hold the interviews, but we will not take a vote until after legislation comes forward. And, and if council passes, that legislation to, uh, increase the board. Because Councilwoman Gross, you were correct last week when you brought attention, so thank you very much for doing that. But we're, so we will not, we will not vote on those appointments. We are just holding the interviews because they are scheduled. And we anticipate legislation to come forward. And so then council will meet, uh, Wednesday, March twenty-fourth, uh, for the standing committee's meeting at ten AM. To register to speak, please fill out in, uh, the signup form on the council meeting webpage by nine AM Wednesday morning. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight by the registration deadline. And do we have anything from members? Not seen? Oh, this is, yes, Reverend, I probably.
I have always agreed that on a national level, we spend much too much money on the military and not enough money in social services, right? Both the money we spend in foreign aid and the money that we spend in, um, military, you know, is bloated and should be reduced and transferred to social services. Um, this summer, we've had, you know, um, last summer, we had this outpouring of energy around block life matter and around, um, talking about defunding or moving money from the police force into social services. And, um, I, I, I really think that energy from the activists concerned citizens was helpful. Very helpful. And I, I really do admire many of the young people who came out and their energy and their passion. But I also, I will also say that, that over the last decade, um, or so, I first start talking on council. It's funny how sometimes we don't, we don't see the power of words, but I began to talk about council about ten years ago, somewhere around that, maybe eight. somewhere around that, maybe eight, about a city for all. And I began to come to council chambers to talk about Pittsburgh becoming a city for all. And then later that language, that phrase got picked up by, um, the mayor and picked up by Gil, uh, Chief Gilman. And now you hear it, you know, across our city. This, this idea of being a city for all. I, I'm going to argue that this council i- in partnership with Councilman Lovell and I, that this policy plan of Black Pittsburgh matters with its our policy priorities and, uh, principles, that Black Lives Matter, protecting the health and safety of Black people. Black communities matter, rebuilding traditional Black communities. And finally, Black wealth matters, increasing Black employment and entrepreneurship. That is the framework. That is the plan of moving our city forward. Uh, we have, um, through our policy initiatives, uh, initiated just a flurry of things. Our city has passed, our, our mayor has passed it, and I'm, I will argue, um, and I is, I have great, great sympathy for activists, and, and they, they're really, they inform public policy. Uh, but we are legislators, which is somewhat separate. And we have some confines in terms of what we can do. I would think to the best of our ability, we have went, we have done as much as we could do uh, or thought to do. And if others have differing views of what we should do, we welcome that participation. But I will defend, um, what this council and the mayor have done thus far. We have done incredible work, whether it's the Housing Opportunity Fund, whether it's reimagining the police, whether it's the Stop the Violence Fund, whether it's building, um, more affordable housing, whether it's rebuilding African-American communities, whether it's, um, encouraging Black employment and entrepreneurship, uh, avenues of hope. Um, we've just done this, this, this tremendous amount of work. And so, um, I am always willing to have the conversation about what we can do more. Um, but I think I'll be a little bit more honest and vocal when I hear, when I hear information that's not true, right? You know, when we say that we could not, even if we wanted to, uh, defund the police by fifty percent, it was structurally impossible. When people say that they still want that, then I think I have to push back and say, yeah, but I do too, but you can't do it. It's illegal. And because we have to be careful. Because again, we want to, and, and I think that's right. And I want to be real cool. I talk a lot about Black issues, but not in isolation. I want us to be a city for all. I'm a, I'm a man of faith, and my faith tells me Jesus said, what you do to the least of these. And so in Pittsburgh, the least of these are disproportionately African-Americans. And so that's why I advocate for them. It is not, I am an African-American, but it is their condition. It makes me advocate for them through our faith. And so through my faith. And so I think we are becoming a city for all. We are, we are prioritizing, um, African-Americans and the Black community in a way we have not done in the history of our city. Um, and I'm proud of that work. And so I think we, we, we will, we will go down this path. Um, I still think, you know, we will have, um, great energy. But I, I will say, and I invite all of the activists, all of you. Um, I am willing to have a policy conversation any place, any time, publicly or privately, on the work we have done, on the work that's yet to be done, and how we can partner together. If you have legislation that can make things better, and I said this before, send it to us. Me and Councilman Lovell will consider it and win, and work with you. Um, um, we've done the best we know to do. This council has done the best it knows to do. And if there's ways we can do this better, come on, let's do this together. The idea is not just to build Black communities, though, although I want to do that. I want to build a great city. I want to build a great city for everybody. I think you deserve affordable housing, no matter what your income, right? Everybody deserves affordable housing. Everybody deserves clean, safe streets. Everybody deserves great education. And so those issues, we work together. Um, would be contentious sometimes, yep. Will it be difficult? Yep. Are we dealing with centuries of systemic racism and sexism? Which we see, you know, even raise itself up in the NCAA Basketball Women's Tournament. Yep. Yep, we're going to have to deal with this, but, um, that is necessary. But the goal is to be a city for all. That every single person and every single child has access to a great city and a hope or a great future. That's, that's what I think we are to do, and we, we have to do it. We, we have to do it together. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Any other members? Seeing none, can I have a motion to excuse the absent members, a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting? And we'll be joined back here, uh, for interviews shortly.
Come on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Be safe, everyone. See you shortly.